Right on session and the first item is a an update about Washington County preschool trial. Mike will pick this up.
Excellent, thank you. About a year ago, we had a conversation, a Washington County School District had a conversation with Northwest Regional ESD. And the conversation centered around, is it possible, would it be possible to find a way to make preschool accessible for every child in Washington County? And as a, as a collective of districts, we made the decision that that's a, that's a question we wanted to pursue and see if that's something that can be pulled off for that. Following that, there is a board, or a coalition that was formed, a preschool for all. And the question on what, the question that they put on the table, is it possible to pull this off? And if so, what would it take to do that? And so we, as a, as a district or as a board, have not said, go do this yet. We have said, let's explore this and let's see what it would take. So today we have the two co-leaders, facilitators of the coalition. And one is Sarah Pope, who's the Assistant Superintendent over the Northwest Regional ESD. And one is Olga Kuna, who need no introduction in these parts. And so they're here just to give us an update and to give us a report of the work that's been happening and where we currently at. Sarah and Olga, take it away.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. And I think that we're starting off with a first part and Sarah will jump in a little bit. I just wanted to say that we have so many hours, we have put in so many hours since May into the planning. We've had, we have about 20 slides that we're gonna summarize in just 15 minutes. So I know there are going to be some questions, but there's another opportunity in the future that you want to bring us back for more answers. There will be more than that to do that. So just to start, it is with such great excitement that I introduced you to preschool for all, Washington County, not as a strategy, but as a mindset, a new way of looking at early learning for three and four-year-olds. Like Mike said, we're a coalition that is now made up of about 70 partners and we're growing. And we are childcare, preschool providers, school districts, culturally specific CEOs, we have elected leaders, just to name a few. I didn't want to lie about them, just that. So the process includes a task force that is creating a workforce. They have policy program and workforce as a workforce, parent accountability council, infrastructure administration. They're going to have a lot of heavy lift. And then of course, the task force is chaired by Bridgette, Montloma, Belinda, and Hades and myself. And we do a lot of planning and review of the recommendations that we connect the problem. We believe that we are co-creating something really big for a better future for young children. A future where every child has access to preschool and opportunities to succeed. Just to be more explicit, the preschool for all coalition is designing an approach that will give three and four-year-olds in Washington County access to quality school programs that are inclusive and equally sound at no cost, imagine that, no cost to the family. In addition to providing strong preschool programs, of course, we're looking at funding policies that will also address workforce and infrastructure challenges, identify a sustainable funding funding source to make preschool freely accessible to all families and all the community. A large body of research, and we can move to the next slide. Yes, thank you. A large body of research on early brain human development tells us that the sooner children have access to enriching early learning experiences, the sooner that they will begin to develop a huge social, emotional, and cognitive skills that they need to succeed in school and in life. The same research tells us that preschool is one of the most costly places. As you can see on this slide, earlier that we begin, the greater the likelihood of impact, the longer our costs and the greater the return of investment. You can see on the left side that we want capital, it's not completed under the best, but that means it's greater return, the best that can come out of it. And so next, my friend Sarah will present challenges that we're currently facing as a county. And she will also talk a little bit about our approach. Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Scott and Olga Kuna. Sarah Pope, Assistant Superintendent at Northwest Regional ESD. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see some of the challenges that we're facing specifically in Washington County. And many of you, as educators, as leaders, as parents or grandparents, aunts and uncles probably have experienced this either professionally or personally. But we live in something called a preschool desert, which, in Washington County specifically, which means that there's three children for every slot that's available. So when you look out over the 15,000 three and four-year-olds in our county, we actually have far fewer than that in terms of publicly funded preschool slots. We have just shot, just over 2,200 publicly funded preschool slots. And there's only childcare slots for about 9,000 kids across the county. And this is data that was pre-pandemic, so we know these numbers have gone downwards, not upwards. The other big challenge that many of you have either experienced personally or professionally is the cost of preschool. So these are the median costs, ranging from about $650 a month to about $1,400 a month for preschool. And this is median, so you will find some that are a little lower and some that are a lot higher. As a professional at the ESD, we work with early childhood, children in special education. And we know there's just not enough preschool slots for all the kids that we serve. And then as a mom of a three-year-old and a five-year-old, I felt really lucky when I found a preschool slot after being on a waitlist for an awful long time, but paying close to what we pay for our mortgage. So the affordability is a really big problem, the capacity is a really big problem. And the other big challenge as it relates to preschool in Washington County is the workforce. This is a workforce that is not paid close to what they need to be paid to make it a sustainable profession. So the median hourly wage for head teachers in center-based care, so this would be some of the largest centers that we have in Washington County and the highest paid staff are at $13 to $18 an hour. So the capacity, affordability, and workforce present some of the largest challenges. We also see though, a lot of inequities in the system. So it's really hard to find a slot, a preschool slot, it's really hard to afford it if you can find it. And then if you face systemic barriers like racism or poverty or ableism, it's even that much harder to find a slot for your child who needs preschool. So knowing these challenges are really real and knowing the research, as Olga spoke to, is also very promising about what high-quality preschool experience can mean for children and for our economy and our community writ large. We have, you can advance to the next slide now, are looking into, as Superintendent Scott said, what would it look like to solve this problem? So the task force that's been alluded to is coalescing around this vision, universal preschool for all three and four-year-olds. Prioritizing, knowing we couldn't flip the light switch and have all 15,000 children in preschool tomorrow. Prioritizing kids who need it, who face the most systemic barriers to access right now. So kids of, students of color, students in poverty, and students in special education would be prioritized first. That the program is high-quality and developmentally appropriate. That there's a focus on funding the workforce and addressing wages and the professionalism and the training needed to help ensure that the field, that folks want to stay in the profession. And also resources set up to address the infrastructure needs, knowing that there's classroom space that would be needed if we were to reach a universal, a universal program for all the three and four-year-olds in our county. And that the program is run really responsibly and effectively. So this is the vision that the task force is coalescing around. And if you go to the final slide, you'll see the timeline and the progression of what we're considering. So we're in this first phase of the research, stakeholder engagement, and policy development. That will conclude in February. And then we're going to move into policymaker and engagement work. And also would fine-tune a funding mechanism in that spring phase, that second phase. If we're successful and things move along, we would ask the Washington County Board of Commission to put a ballot measure on the ballot in November that would fund a program like the one that Olga and I was just speaking to. And that would be on the November, the November ballot potentially. So this is our timeline, we really appreciate the early support in terms of investigating this work. We are not at a ballot measure right now, so we are not in that phase. But as this policy is developing, we wanted to make sure we got to brief the Hillsborough Board of Directors on the work. And that concludes the presentation and we're happy to take any questions if there's time for that. But I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Mike Scott.
Eric, can you, or Olga, can you, do you have an ask for the board tonight?
I think Olga, do you want to set that one up?
We don't have an ask, like Sarah said, we're not in campaign mode yet, but we do, we would like a soft endorsement. And there is a form, Mike, I emailed the link to you, that we would like our district to sign. And it's so that we can, when we come up with the work that we can reference all of our partners. Just like I did earlier, we have so many partners that are already in our state that have signed this form. And again, it's not yet the official endorsement to open a package with a soft endorsement.
Do board members have questions?
I did have a question, sorry, I see Shan, I just saw your hand on there. I did just have a question about the established committee and the different representation that you have in that, that is doing this first phase of the work. What kind of sectors are in that group and I guess who's represented?
Yeah, I'm happy to share a little bit more information over email too, for the full list of participants. But it's all told, it's about 70 people involved, about 40 of whom are on the task force and then about another 30 on the two, two work groups. And the task force is made up, it's really diverse, both in terms of positions, also the racial makeup of the task force is really diverse. Runs a gamut from parents and providers to school district leaders, some superintendents, to elected officials, Mayor Beatty and Mayor Callaway from Beaverton and Hillsborough respectively, Chair Harrington from Washington County Commission, and Commissioner Trese, along with culturally specific organizations who run preschool, nonprofits who are in the advocacy arena, Children's Institute is on the group. And so it really, the idea of this group is to set a really diverse table to have these discussions and to have it informed both by people's lived experience and, and also what we know by the research around preschool. And then fueling those task force decisions, we also just concluded 11 parent and provider focused groups, reaching over 100 parents and providers to, so that information will also feed into the recommendations that will be done by February.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much, Sarah and Olga. This is, this is really exciting and I absolutely think that addressing this early learning phase is so critical, even to the success of K through 12 education. My question is around a funding mechanism. And I would imagine that Oregon State as a whole would be initiating some type of, you know, looking for funding. And if we were to put this on a ballot measure specifically for our region or within Washington County, would we only be utilizing the funding that we would get from our county? Or would there be other statewide funding that would also trickle in? Or I guess how does, how does that funding mechanism work?
Yeah, it's a really good question. So if we were to put something on the ballot, it would also generate revenue that would be dedicated to funding the universal preschool program. We would leverage, you know, I spoke about the 2,200 publicly funded slots currently. So the program would align that we could maintain those. And if the state funds additional ones, we would gladly receive those as well because we could adjust the funding mechanism downwards if there's state or national, and I should talk about the federal proposal in a second too, state or national dollars to complement the local effort. So the funding would be generated locally and that money would stay in Washington County. But if there's further state or national investments, we could adjust downward the amount that would need to be raised locally. And it is also a really good question because the federal proposal called Build It Back Better, well, it has not passed and we don't know the outcome of it, it is being considered. And if, and if it were to pass, it would be the largest investment both in childcare and in preschool. So childcare and preschool are two different things, but it would invest in both in slightly different ways. We don't yet know how much resource would come to Oregon if that were to pass. We do know Oregon would have to have a state investment, it would be a federal-state matching program. What we've heard in terms of what we've been able to read about the proposal is it's likely we would, well, it is, we would still need a local investment. It wouldn't fund universal preschool for all three and four-year-olds in the sorts of programs that the task force is imagining, which would include full-year programs in addition to school-year length programs. But similar to the mechanism I talked about earlier, we could adjust downwards, we wouldn't need as much funding. And so if we were to pass something locally and the feds were to pass something soon thereafter in a different order, we would adjust downwards the amount we would need to generate locally to round out the program.
Yes, one question I also had just around that was how to, thinking about childcare, and I know this conversation or thought process has been going around, but thinking about childcare as an infrastructure investment in communities. And I know that that's something that is all, is that part of also the Build Back Better, is that separate? And the thinking behind the funding mechanism that we're kind of, I think it's nebulous right now and we haven't really, aren't at that phase. But is there, I guess, how that, how the group and how we're all thinking about childcare and so important to our infrastructure, but also just to our thriving community? So I'm wondering if that is part of the conversation as well?
At the national level, but also at the state level, the preschool for all initiative that we are working on is specifically targeting three and four-year-olds. But you know, the state is very interested and working with us, so we have a meeting with them on Thursday, talk about our initiative. They want to partner, we have great relationships, our districts have great partnerships with the Early Learning Division at the state level. And so I'm hoping that they can also support, we have funding and signings left in that way. We do care for childcare, it's just that the initiative right now is targeting the three and four-year-olds because of the child, the preschool better phenomenon that we experience as a county.
It's, so I guess the question on the table is, would the board be comfortable with Mark and I signing on and, and saying that the Hillsborough School District is supportive of this effort and interested in continuing to pursue it?
I did a little more question though, sorry. Do you have an idea of what the rough ask is at this point? Like how many years, how much per year, what does it take, best guess, to make it real?
I'm gonna unmute, yeah, I'm gonna unmute cautiously, but you're gonna hear my kindergartner in the other room here in a second. I'm gonna talk fast. So we're having Eco Northwest do a cost model that will be completed at the end of the month. What we know though, is that to reach saturation, we probably would need about 11,000 more preschool slots. And we can anticipate what we think the cost would be, but once that cost model is done, we'll know for sure. So knowing though, that it's probably over $100 million a year, we're not looking at like a property tax. It wouldn't generate the revenue necessary to fund something like this. And it also would compress, not a school district levy because a county would put it on the ballot, but it would compress city levies that are already on the ballot. So that, that second phase will investigate the funding mechanism in more depth. But it would need to be a mechanism that looks probably more like a high-income tax earner, potentially a payroll tax that could get in the ballpark, but we'll know for sure once the cost modeling is done.
I was going with compression.
Yes, we will avoid compression.
So I guess the next question I have is, if the board, which I would believe that we would all want preschool for all, if we do this, we do this now and say the projection comes out and we don't know if we're going to be able to swing that amount of funding. In my, in my head, in my legal head, I hear all kinds of questions that are gonna come up about equity. If we are currently at, you know, only 2,300 spots for 15,000 children and we only get to 11,000, right? Then how do we make that happen? And then if we get the money from the state, do they get to divide that up with other states, with other districts and throughout to bring equity? From that point of view, there's a lot of equity questions that come. And I want us to be in, I want us to be for this, but what happens after? We've said, yes, we're standing up for it, then what's the next step? And then what's the next step for us to say we're in? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Olga, do you want to take that one or would you like me to?
I can't be interviewed too, Sarah. I, so our plan is to ensure that priority calculations are taken care of first, right? So similar to Montloma County, they have a small plan, the first couple of years, they're right at the beginning addressing the needs of our priority calculation. Very similar to this group's promise, which is a state-level initiative. And the state will continue to do the same, same thing. The president, President Biden has a similar plan to this initiative. And so eventually, we would face into everybody, right, preschool for all and preschool for all. But equity is a major driver in the local level.
So if Mike and I put our names on a document representing support from the school district and something comes up and we decide that it's not something that will be on the November ballot, I don't think there's a problem with that, right?
Yeah, this would just be a support at the high level for the concept. And then if it makes it to the ballot by a referral from the Washington County Board of Commission, then the campaign would come back and say, do you want to support it at this point? So it does not, it would not, it does not mean a support of a ballot measure, this support today.
Yeah, we're not signing the form as a, yeah.
And just to be clear, support from the board would look more in the form of an endorsement as opposed to financial contribution from our district, right?
Yep, that's correct, use of your logo for the high-level support, yeah. And I probably misspoke on the numbers, I said them really quickly with my kindergartner in the background, but we have about 15,000 three and four-year-olds. And what research shows is that not every person, even if you make the program universal, not every parent's gonna sign their child up. So what we're modeling it after is about 80, 85% of those 15,000 three and four-year-olds would probably, their families would probably want a slot for them. So we're modeling a program that would serve the 11,000 kids necessary to reach full saturation. And that's the cost model that Eco Northwest is working on. We also know that even if we wanted to, we couldn't flip the switch and have 11,000 more preschool slots tomorrow. That's what the 80% of 15,000 gets you, so it's 11,000 more slots we need. And so that's where we're gonna have to ramp up. And so the children who'd be served first are prioritized by the task force. So they'd be students of color, students based on income, and students with developmental disabilities. So that population would go first and then as you ramp up to reach universal for all kids. But I didn't want it to sound like the intent wasn't to serve all kids, it is to serve all kids. We're just doing the math on what saturation would likely look like in this county.
Thank you for that clarification.
So a question on location, so this is across Washington County, how, what would the structure look like as far as locations for these families to access? It's gonna be buildings here, 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 and how is that funded in a square way?
We have some recommendations that are coming forward from the infrastructure work group. And that is something that we're continuing to do. It almost goes regarding a great decision right now because we're building this. So we hope that some of the funding will support the infrastructure and the building. We are, we're doing a dynamic, but we are still.
And that'll be part of the ramp up, figuring out how do we generate new programs, buildings and the staff.
Exactly right.
One more question, well, unless somebody else has one. In your presentation, you mentioned Washington County being a childcare desert. And I would say if you spent any time listening to the state legislature this past session, representatives from North Coast to Beyer County to Medford talked about how Oregon is a childcare desert. How would Washington County sort of rank? Is it just about the same as at Oregon, the rest of Oregon, or are we unique in some way?
That's a really good, oh, go ahead, okay.
I think we are well represented by that and we know, have heard of other districts, other counties that are also considering looking at what we're doing. We are actually getting calls from HACOS. And we went into jumping, it was something similar. Montloma County did it and I know that it is really generating a lot of interest in our state. So yeah, Sarah, you have anything else?
I just was gonna say it's an interesting question. I haven't done the calculation to know, but I'm happy to do that and get back to the board. Are we worse off than other counties in the state or how do we compare to the state? Basically, the state is also a childcare desert. And I know now I'm using the term childcare and preschool interchangeably, so I do want to be careful of that because they are, they are different. But I could, we could crunch the numbers and get back to you on that question.
Just wanna be the best.
And what, what was Montloma County's ask? They passed it, so Montloma was already, already passed this. And what was their ask, do you remember?
Their ask in terms of how did they fund it or their ask in terms of what did they create?
Dollar amount on the ballot.
I'm sorry, say that last word again.
The dollar amount on the ballot.
Oh, they ended up using a high-income tax earner. I think it was about 1.5% of income over 150,000, but don't quote me on those numbers. I'd have to get you the precise ballot measure language.
Curious what they hope to generate with that too.
Approximately 125 million, I believe, in the first year. And then the population of kids three and four is obviously growing, so that revenue pot grows over time as well. But right around 100 million, a little bit more per year in the beginning.
Be for a period of time, you'd have to do another ask, right? It's not gonna be fun, if Washington County put this on the ballot, it wouldn't be funded perpetually, it would be for X number of years.
It depends how the ballot measure language is structured. So Montloma County structured theirs, that the county commission actually could adjust both upwards or downwards the rate that they're collecting and it doesn't sunset. But that would all be in that pre-referral campaign committee that would decide how to, how to write the ballot measure language.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Before we go to our next item, I will notice that Matt and Adam are here, hello, thanks for coming. I'm not gonna put you on the spot right now to decide, but we have another item before we get to you guys. But I'll, you know, I'll sort of let you decide if you'd rather compress down to 15-minute presentation or if you bump to another day. So that's about where we're at.
I think we can do it.
Okay. You don't have to decide now, just, this conversation may take longer than we think, but so, just letting you know that you're on the boat.
I understand. We'll go fast, we'll do our best.
Okay.
You go first.
Yeah, well, if we don't go fast, then it's gonna be relevant. All right, our next item is the consideration of policy JFCJ and KGVB. So this, this, I'll take it later, just for a little background. Most people would not know or guess that currently in Oregon, if you have a concealed carry permit, which you definitely have to go extra trained, it's not just a gun license, you have to go through quite a bit of training and pass tests and whatnot. But if you have a concealed carry permit in Oregon, you can currently bring your firearm to this meeting in our building, you can bring it to a parent-teacher conference, you can bring it to back-to-school night. So that's been the case for quite a while. So currently in Oregon, if you have a concealed carry permit, you're able to bring your weapon to school, even though we consider ourselves gun-free zone. This past legislative session, the state legislature passed a new law and OSBA has crafted a policy around that language, allowing local municipalities to prohibit concealed carry permit owners from carrying weapons on their property. So the So the reason we're bringing it up here in a work session as opposed to just putting it on first reading or whatever is that it's an optional policy. Not every school district in Oregon is going to think this law is right for them. And maybe we do, maybe we don't. But I wanted to give us an opportunity to discuss, much like our equity policy, not every school district in Oregon has equity policy. We chose that that was right for us. So I'm trying to use that as a model for how we discuss optional policy. So. So now is the time for us to sort of discuss whether or not the school district or Hillsborough School District would like to adopt the policy prohibiting concealed carry permit holders from carrying weapons. I know Director Allen cannot be here today, but she sent this along as her perspective, and then we'll let everybody else chime in, but so. Lisa says, this policy is a no brainer. There's absolutely no reason someone needs to bring a firearm onto school campus. Playgrounds, cafeterias, and classrooms where children spend their day should obviously be without lethal weapons. Guns have no place at back to school nights, fundraisers, or dances. The vast majority of our community would be shocked and appalled to learn that a policy like this isn't already in effect. We've discussed doing something like this with earlier iterations of the board, but we're unable to do so due to state law. Now that we are able, we should approve this proposed policy as soon as possible. We also have a letter from, so once, once it got put on the agenda, people know. So we have a letter from, combined letter from Everytown for Gun Safety, Moms Demand Actions, and Students Demand Action in Support of the Policy. And is this in our packet anywhere yet?
It's not on the packet, it's in your board site.
Okay, so it's on the board site, all right. And then another one from, what's that?
Both of them.
Both of them, okay. Another letter of support, subject letter of support for any concealed carry permit on this property from the legislative group that represents parts of our district, Representative Solomon, Representative McLean, Representative Neron, and Representative Campbell. So just like to open it up to discussion as to whether or not we think this would be a policy we'd like to adopt in Hillsborough. All right. Put it on first read. Kate, do you have any other background?
I do, if you want staff input on this, I would strongly encourage the board to adopt this policy. We have had examples recently and over the course of my time in the district where either something has happened nationally or locally where certain people have wanted to express their maybe open carry right, and they've done that with kind of these loopholes, what I'll consider them, with Oregon revised statutes. The result is when somebody has done this, what it really does, it just scares kids and parents. This will allow us the opportunity to post signage and tell our community that weapons are not allowed on our, on district property. Currently, we can't do that because people have the ability with the concealed carry permit to carry an arm on our campuses. So there's a lot of confusion, like Mark alluded to, about carrying firearms on, on district property. And it's been a challenge to be able to answer those questions over time. I fully agree with Lisa that, you know, this, this would really be a benefit to our schools, our safe and inclusive schools as we move forward. And this is the first opportunity that we've been able to discuss adopting something like this from the passage of the Senate bill.
Yeah, a lot just passed, and, and it's already, there are already places where concealed carry weapons are prohibited already. All federal courts, some national parks, any private business, any private business can post a sign prohibiting as well in the extra respect. So it, it's not uncommon. It's just we would be adding our district facilities to the list of places that are already.
And I can say, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of voices against this, but just to reiterate, I think that from a student's side, you'd be pretty happy to see this policy. It's been an interesting week. I was, I'm from Blanco High School where we had our incident over previous week. And I think it's been on everybody's mind. And I think that knowing that this is a thing, I was speaking to one of the class that TA for, which I brought up that I was reading in my packet in the back of the room. They were also surprised and shocked that this is already a thing. And I think that it's going to be pretty widely popular to have less danger of firearms being around students at any given point in time. I think that's going to be a big thing for our state to find.
Oh, Michelle, we have a statement from Michelle?
She can't unmute.
Oh, Michelle's not here.
So Michelle Chen, student representative, says, I believe that many students would feel safer if guns were prohibited. Many students feel unsafe at school and want policies like these. With so many threats and incidents, students are scared, people are scared. Students shouldn't have to be afraid at school.
I'm hoping, well, I was going to say that I encouraged everyone to. To support the effort, but I do want to say that I absolutely advocate for everyone's second amendment right to their arm. It's important. I would go forward to getting my concealed carry. However, like every other right, there are limitations that make sense, and that should be. And I don't feel that I need to have my weapon with me when I come to this meeting or when I go to Liberty High School to talk about my son. And that's where I draw the line. So while I fully support gun rights, this is where I draw the line. It's not needed at school. And I would do anything to protect our children. And that's why I think that we should move forward with like a proactive step. And how shall I say, putting clarity for that.
And I would say in that circumstance, if you look at the language of the policy carefully, there is an exception made for somebody who is a concealed carry holder who needs to go pick up their student at school. If, if the gun is locked in the trunk in a lockbox and qualifies for the safe storage component, Senate Bill 554, and that car is parked in our parking lot, that's a. Anybody online have anything to add?
I do. This, the policy also covers like school buses, right? It's not just the grounds of our school. Like it, it would apply to that as well.
I think it's school property.
Yeah, so that would be included on.
Yeah.
That for, well, I'm trying to read this, it says school grounds.
Yeah.
School bus is federal because it's transportation.
Well, and we have policies that cover that.
Oh, yes. For a bit from carrying firearms on district property, so that would be district property. Yeah, the district property would cover the school buses anyway. That's a second paragraph.
Okay.
She and Erica?
Yeah, no, I, I think that this makes sense for us, and I definitely, you know, I think Nancy said this isn't a space or time to exercise rights, especially when it really is so disruptive to student learning and to our, the safety of our students. So I'm just supportive of, of us putting this policy forth.
She and anything like that?
Yeah, I, nothing more to add. I agree with the comments that my four colleagues have raised and am supportive of this policy as well.
So, Monique, can you add?
No, I, I can echo to some degree with Nancy about Second Amendment rights and such. I understand the draw a line. On there, my, my question, I guess, is do we, have we had in the past here in the district, teachers who don't conceal carry?
We, we don't allow staff or students to carry a weapon. It's a separate policy. So this would just be more for the general public that aren't under our employment order or student supervision.
And I would point out that it's, it's easy to try to draw a line from some of the incidents we've had recently to this. But I can tell you, this was the third or fourth time the state legislature took this up and finally passed the law. OSBA took whatever, took them to craft the legally compliant. So this was already on the agenda before any of the recent happens, recent incidents that happened. So for what it's worth, that, then, you know, to your point. So I'm in support of putting this policy out of review as well. So the, the idea would be, it would be part of the policies we put out in review tonight, and then would become our policy when we vote on it at the January regular meeting. So I, I own a gun. I don't ever feel I need to bring it to school. Just don't think it's a thing I need to do. So, all right, so I guess. Leave it in the packet, all right? Thank you, everyone. You get like twenty minutes, oh, no, you get like fifteen. All right, let, let me do the other one real first, real quick. I'll do, we're going to go out of order here. The National School Board Association National Meeting is in April this year. It is in San Diego. April second to April fourth, that tends to be like a Thursday, like news. So the one time I went to San Antonio with Director Sprouse, I think we flew on Thursday and Monday, maybe? So Friday events, yeah, so we do have the ability to have more members attend the conference. I would highly recommend it if it's something you can fit into your schedule. It's, I don't know how, well, it was canceled last year, last couple of years because COVID, I think. So I don't know how well attended it will be, but I, I really got a lot out of the, the time that I spent with the other national board members, just learning how the, the similarities and differences. You know, in Illinois, it turns out it's back to, it's sort of how we were before unified. All the elementary schools are one school district, all the high schools and middle schools are a different district. So students matriculate out of the sixth grade and go to a whole different school district.
One of the reasons we're posing the question now is that, I mean, past years when it's been in person, registration fills up pretty quick, or the accommodations fill up pretty quick. So if you are entertaining the idea of going at all, if you would let Rose know in the next couple of weeks, that would be really helpful.
If I can clarify just the next week, because early bird registration starts and save the money. We know within the week, so.
And if you, frankly, if you go, your, your preference is to be in the facilities sometime, so that you don't have to, or the one next door, like, like you don't want to be too far from what's at.
Just so Rose can have that on her radar, is there anyone considering going?
I would be considering going.
I would too. And yeah, the only thing I would ask for double check, and Rose, maybe you can help me with this, with Jane and OSBA is figuring out if, if I go, if they would cover my cost or if it would be out of our district.
And for when anybody would have, you sort of expected that after the event, you would, you had some type of report from us about the things you learned while you were there?
All right. I knew that one would be fast. So you guys have till. The five till.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. We're excited to do this in person. The last time we did this, it was online and it was a little more challenging. So the, the goal of tonight's presentation is to give you an update on where we stand after our summer of 2021 in terms of our bond program and our bond projects. Matt Buckingham, you all know, is the chair of our Citizen Oversight Committee at now. So let's go. So just an update on where we stand financially. Just, we've got a total of about five hundred and ten million dollars to spend. We have committed just over five hundred million dollars of that, five hundred and ten million. So we've got a little bit left uncommitted. But this includes all of the expenditures we made to date, plus the remaining commitments that we have, which would be the new school, South Hillsborough, and all of our 2022. So that's where we are. So we're, we've spent about eighty-five percent, eighty-six percent of the dollars we have available to us. This is just, for me, it's a big wow. This is how much money we've spent each year of the law. And it's, it's. So again, nothing really other than to just kind of shed some light on, on what we've got to date. Another big piece of the financial tie is when we put this bond measure on the ballot, our commitment to the community was that we would try to maintain our existing bond rate at that time, which was two dollars twenty-four cents per hundred thousand dollars assessed value. This year, that bond rate is two thirteen. Growth in assessed value of our community has helped us to maintain or actually lower the tax rate. Okay, so now we're good stuff, jumping. So as you all know, we have completed our second new elementary school, it's called a falling ridge. We had a dedication on September second that I think most everybody was able to attend. If you weren't, we have a virtual tour on the website there. We have a few remaining punchless items. We have a projector that we're still waiting on a lens for. You'll notice, you'll see that supply chain delayed material statement on several of these. It's, it's a real thing, but for the most part, it hasn't impacted our ability to function in those spaces. It's just we're waiting on a few of the final pieces. So, a falling ridge is. But in our pre elementary school, this campus is really kind of transformed. We, we did a bunch of safety seismic ADA upgrades, including a new elevator in the building, added air conditioning, they have the entry vest, you will, we separated the parents and the buses by creating a new bus drop off on the back east side of the campus. Can I see it there, the first picture? So we no longer have buses and cars all together, it's a tiny space. We expanded the parking area. We have a new front plaza that's beautiful. We watched a building to replace the old portal they had. And we also worked with the county, with Washington County, to create an access road back to their, their soil, backside of the campus. That, the only part of this project that's still ongoing is on the backside, the east side, the access road into our new car plus drop off, where it required to do half street improvements along Southview. Like back there, so those are ongoing, should be done probably in a little bit. ES twenty-nine, this is our new school in South Hillsborough, right across the street from Travis's house. As you know, we, we started this project last spring to get all of the, or the majority of the site work done. We have the two parking lots built with the first lift of asphalt. We have the grating and everything done for the synthetic dirt field that will be going in. We're all ready for the construction of the building and all the, the vertical stuff. Scheduled to start in the spring. Opening in September twenty twenty-three. Yeah. Farmington View Elementary School, lots of seismic, lots of roofing work at that school. We put new windows throughout the building. This is one of our buildings that still has some single base windows. We put new windows throughout the building. This is one of our buildings that still had assembly of a single base windows. So those are all gone, insulated windows in all those spaces. New HVAC with the addition of air conditioning. Renovated the drop off parking lot area, expanded that to provide more parking for parents and more access for folks that pick up the drop off time and the new secure entry desk.
We don't build schools without necessary distance.
We don't build them, but now we don't have to. Now, all of the ones that were built that didn't have it, have it. Yeah.
Everybody's got it.
Everybody's got it. Yeah, just through this bond.
That was a promise of the bond. Yeah.
Groner Elementary School, or I'm sorry, Groner K8 School. All of the seismic work, except for the gym, is complete. And I'll get to that in a second. Lots of roofing work there, ADA upgrades. They also got a new elevator handle lift for their stage, new security vest and jewel, domestic water pipe replacement at their gym. Is up and functioning now because as a part of the work we did this summer, we discovered a beam there that had failed, or was in the process of failing. And our structural engineers, we had to get everybody out of there and we could not access that site. That's what you see there on the right hand side of that picture. The the new beams, steel beams are, will be onsite next week. We'll fly the first one of those beams into the gym. The following weekend, not this weekend, but next weekend, we'll be having a beam signing for the community out there. Between the thirteenth and the fifteenth. So if you want to sign a beam, that's going to go up above the gym at Gro. The other nice thing is because we're having to cut holes in the gym wall to fly these beams in, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to put some windows into that gym where they haven't had them in the past. It's just been that dark box. So that's a nice feature that we'll be able to do. We'll also be coming back to Gro under this summer to replace all of their single paint windows. We're also able to add insulation to that gym as part of the
Can you, can you let Rose know the date of the signing of the beam so that she can let? I'm sorry, that's really fun.
WL Henry, the majority of the work at this school was completed last summer, but we had some additional HVAC, air conditioning, and the completion of the new gym and entry vest and jewel that we did this summer. So we, and there was a little bit of seismic work on the the place structure that we needed to have that. But that building is completely done now. That was one that we hit several times over the course of the bond. With the playground, the modular building. It's it's a transform. Indian Hills, the majority of this work was done in in 2020, but we had to come back and do some improvements to rock roads that were required by the county. That work is all additional lighting. We were able to make that driveway if they have their Jackson Elementary School, that there has a new security vest and jewel. They have a new ADA restroom and they have a new gym. All of that work is down there. Lad Acre's Elementary School, a lot of work there. We actually took advantage of the fact that we didn't have people in that building for a portion of last year that enabled us to get a head start on where there's a lot of HVAC work that had to happen in that building. Because that campus is so spread out, there's so many different buildings that require a lot of additional work. But they now have a ADA restroom, a lift for their stadium, seismic upgrades. They have their new security vest and jewel. They have a playground and a gym in addition to the parent bus drop off work we did the very first summer of this.
Did you just wait till we got Fran out there?
Those who don't know Fran.
I was there for that.
And I would suggest, like, if you're a board member and now that we can do site business, school business again, and you haven't been to Lad Acres, there's a uniqueness to it that's worth stopping by.
Yeah. McKinley Elementary School, they have a new gym. They have completely remodeled the the media center that built it. It's so much brighter. So much more functional than it was. We did the ADA upgrades there, the ADA restroom, a lift, their stage. They have their new security vest and jewel. We actually had our oversight committee meeting there in September. Yep. Had a chance to, I think, walk through the building. Mitcher Bridge Elementary School, another campus with a new gym. We did a little bit of roofing there. And these over, so the classroom areas. They have new security vest and jewel. Did some work on the playground, as you can see there. We also did some work on their play fields on the backside of the campus. That in addition to the drop off that we did a couple of years ago.
Did you, did you actually say parent less drop off?
No. So part of, part of the goal of this whole one is
I heard it like three times.
That would be nice. No.
I was trying to imagine that.
Our goal is to separate parents, kids, and classes. So that's, that's the goal.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Mitcher Bridge, new gym, oh, North Plains, another building that we've been back to several times over the course of the bond. But they now have their new gym in place. New seismic roofing upgrades, replaced a bunch of skylights at that site. They have an ADA lift, an ADA restroom. Pulled out the portable classrooms and moved onto that site the very first summer. We built over to Peter Bosco and replaced it with their new playground, and they have their new security vest. Oak Street Campus Pathway Center, still a pathway center, might be a gag, but this building is scheduled for substantial completion in, what, eight days? So love to have an opportunity to take more than anybody else who's interested in doing this, but we're gonna have an education in an open house on February 2nd. You really turned out.
This was one of the things that the bond really allowed us to do because I think when we went out to parents with the bond, what we were looking at was renovating, and Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, we were looking at renovating Old Imperial Home, turning that into our pathway center. Instead, we decided to build a rebuilding, and we switched from going modular to going traditional stick construction because we found it was going to be cheaper. So again, flexibility of administration staff has really been a credit to the district in producing this. I can't wait to turn it. This is going to be really, I think, the the spear point of getting our graduation rates up even higher than we are.
I think since Matt mentioned that, that's, that has been one of the huge pluses of having this bond, citizen bond oversight. I mean, it's been great to just be able to go to a meeting, have a conversation, and give feedback on some of the ideas and some of the trip shifts that we've been able to take around, which I think really been valuable.
It's been five years, six years in that. So I mean, I know you guys signed up a long time to go for that rule, so thank you very much for the community, Matt. It's been longer than some board member ten years.
The oversight committee has opened the doors since 2018, and Matt was a part of
Yeah, there was a committee before.
Yeah, and I was also one of the bond committee that actually
Yeah, the seeds of this were planted long, like fifteen, fourteen, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you for your involvement, all that time, and thank the members of the committee for serving on the committee as well. Hopefully, we can see you in another future. Yeah, I like those.
Next summer, I'm hoping we can do a lot of this, we've got a lot of space. Some additional projects we're able to do this summer, the EPOS siding, stucco siding replacement at Century High School. That was a project we were able to complete. Peter Bosco, as I mentioned, we need portable to North Plains to that site. We also did some ADA restroom work there, seismic roofing. If you haven't been down to the boxing club recently, it is, but you can see it there on the bottom, right? It gets so much brighter for racks and welcoming.
Yeah, a little dangle in there. It's great.
Yeah, yeah. Additional projects, we're still working on the data central, data center reviving project. In Jordan's, it might give you a lot more information on where we are. We're going, but that's ongoing. We have a new gate that's being fabricated for airfield. We'll also be going back to airfield this next summer to replace the domestic water pipe. We replaced all the concrete at the front of Hill High. We wait, this is nice. We're also doing a lot of landscaping with that building. It's another building where we got several buildings across campus. And landscaping is always been a challenge there. So we did some security fencing and pointer. We did a small roofing project at Tobias. We did their entry vest and jewel back at Tobias this coming summer to do their airbus drop off. West Union, we did, I knew with MDF room for them. We are in the process of installing security window film and installation of security fencing. So it's been a busy year. We have now completed all of the seismic work that we have on all around the district. We're within, well, by the end of next summer, by by the end of summer 22, we'll have all of our security, all of our security trio work done. So we're making progress.
Presuming that we are only a small part of the public, how do we? How do we tell the public this is awesome and getting
See that website right there?
So okay, that's what I wanted to know. I wanted to make sure that we're getting the public to understand.
Has done a phenomenal job on that website. There are videos, there are pictures, there are and she updates it every week. So there's new pictures.
Not just, not just online. She also organized an open house at Malden Ridge, which was absolutely and, you know, we had a time that three, different groups going in groups, keep social distancing. And that was just a logistical, huge logistical project, and she just
And also the district newsletter that you just got mailed out, there's five full pages on bond projects. If you need more hard copies, just swing by my office underway downstairs. We have stacks of them. But they got mailed out to every household in the district that attends area last week.
Very early in the process, Adam coached James in one of the
Yes, that's the part I did.
Man, Tom says.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that.
Any other questions for Adam or Matt?
I was gonna say, you you mentioned at the beginning that 500 million to the community, we had about 10 million. So are there other projects to to take up that 10 million or?
Potentially. I want to get through all of the construction first. It it's becoming, you know, inflation is a real thing right now. I want to make sure we get ES9 onboard. We haven't bought the windows yet for the window projects this summer, so I'm I'm not confident saying we got 10 million dollars just like
It's just uncommitted.
But it's uncommitted.
I do think that slide was fairly illustrative of Michelle and your very adept management of our bond funds. The bond assets was 408 million dollars, and we're spending five hundred and ten million dollars. That's in large part due to the great work that you've done, Michelle. So thank you all for that.
But I will say about that 9 million dollars, need agreement. It's not like we haven't thought about it.
There's probably a list of 50 million dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was a list of that. It's huge stuff that didn't make the cut.
Yes.
And we picked up a lot of that. We have, we have picked up a lot of that.
The last thing I'll say is if if you have more questions, if you're interested, our our next oversight committee is on the 16th, which is next Thursday. It'll be at the construction management office. We have Pete.
Any questions for Adam or Matt on live?
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Matt and our bond committee for their continued work on this. And and also to Adam for overseeing all of our projects. I agree with Matt that the Awfali Ridge Elementary School, the logistics to get that open house was a lot, and Jane did an amazing job. So thank you to everyone.
I don't think you guys have to change sessions, but we have to relocate, so I will adjourn the work session. I'll see you all downstairs, maybe five minutes, something like that. We gather here today in person and virtually, and we'd like to take moments to
According to the Kalafulua tradition, people have lived here since time immemorial. Indigenous people still live here today, having persevered through US-sponsored war, displacement, genocide, oppression. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on. The Tu'alitun, Kalafulia, the Kalamet, the Klakamis, Tumwater, Molala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. We believe it is important to acknowledge the ancestors of this place and to recognize that we are here because of the sacrifices forced upon them. In remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We recognize the urban indigenous native first peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over 400 tribal nations.
I move that the board of directors approve the agenda as printed.
I can. Okay, it's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Thomas that we approve the agenda as printed. Do we need a roll call vote, Rose? If you're gonna call roll, we probably need a microphone closer to you.
Director, she and Kim?
Director Sheen Kim?
I. I, can you hear me okay?
Thank you, we can hear you now. Can you guys hear us okay?
It was a little in and out for a little bit, but I know it's good.
Okay.
Director Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Director Yadira Martinez?
Hi.
Director Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Director Monique Ward?
Hi.
Director Mark Watson?
Hi. Motion carries. Audience time, and we have a couple of, so, we have two people signed up, one in person and one virtually. I think they're related to the policies at the end of the agenda that are just on first reading. But rather than make y'all wait until the very end, I'll let you go ahead and, so, maybe we could start with Representative Solomon, I see online, I believe you're signed up. Would you like to go first?
Sure.
I have to read the, hold on a second, I have to read the thing. There we go. Excuse me, sorry, one second. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intend-to-speak card available at the top of the HSD homepage or at the table at the entrance of the boardroom and submit it via the Google form, email, or in person to the executive assistant to the board of directors, Rose Roman. Commenters should include their name, and if they are speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Up to three minutes at the board's discretion will be allowed per comment. Commenters may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL, public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. Comments aimed at state and federally protected classes shall be prohibited. Anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene, or profane language, impatience, lack of respect for others, and personal attacks are not acceptable behavior. Demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or idea are not permitted. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. Representative Solomon, three minutes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate this opportunity. Chair, good evening Chair Watson, fellow board members. I'm Janine Solomon, the state representative for House District Thirty, which includes areas within the Hillsborough School District. Thank you for this opportunity, I will be briefed tonight, and I'm just gonna provide some testimony in support of adopting a prohibition on concealed carry of firearms in the Hillsborough School District. I was the chief co-sponsor of Senate Bill Five Five Four, and I'm a longtime champion of smart gun sense legislation. For me, safe storage and banning concealed firearms in public places has always been about public health and saving lives. Unsecured firearms are a significant contributor to firearm-related deaths in Oregon, including suicide and incidents of domestic violence. I have heard the heartbreaking stories from constituents. Our nation is facing a health crisis and in rapid increase of access, and a rapid increase in access to firearms. It has been growing for years, and now add that to the effects of this pandemic on our mental health needs. Safe storage will save lives. There is a lower risk of unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens when households securely store their firearms while not in use. Overwhelmingly firearms are used in incidents of school violence and are taken from home or from someone they know. Keeping firearms safely stored is a key component to keeping our kids safe. Our school districts can be instrumental partners in a widespread campaign to share information on safe storage with families. I have also heard consistently at my in-district community conversations that my constituents want to feel safe, and they want their children to feel safe. Nowhere is that more important than in our schools. Schoolbug members are facing really tough criticisms right now all across the country. I stand with you tonight. I support you in your efforts to keep our kids safe by adopting a policy to keep guns off their school grounds. I respectfully urge you to adopt this policy now and help take a positive step, step towards ensuring firearms are not allowed in our schools. And board members, I ask that you please see the letter submitted in support of your action, signed by myself, Representative McLean, Representative Neuron, and Representative Campos. Each of us represent an area within the Hillsborough School District, and we are proud to support you in this effort. Thank you.
We have somebody in person?
Yes. Hillary Ulig?
Hi, welcome to the conference here tonight, my name is Hillary Ulig. I'm a former elementary school teacher at the public schools, a twenty-year resident of Hillsborough. I'm here to teach graduates of Liberty High School, and I'm also the Oregon chapter leader for Moms Demand Action, Women's America. I'm here to speak in support and ask the board members to implement a college. To prohibit guns on school property, including concealed firearms. While current law already prohibits guns in schools, Oregon is one of them. An exception to allow concealed firearms on school property. The Oregon Legislature. The Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill Five Five Four earlier this year, and it took effect on September twenty fifth to allow individual school districts to prohibit guns on school grounds, including for concealed carry permit holders. Moms Demand Action volunteers advocated for this bill in the legislature alongside stakeholders like the Oregon Education Association and the Oregon School Board Association. The presence of guns in schools puts teachers, students, and staff at greater risk. While school violence is rare, it occurs with enough frequency that school districts should take action to address this danger. After the incident of a parent armed with a visible gun outside of Lincoln Street Elementary School after causing a lock-in and police intervention, the Hillsborough School Board has the opportunity to set an affirmative policy prohibiting guns on school grounds. Oregon's new law also requires gun owners to store their firearms securely while not under their control. In the last five years, four million children live in a home with at least one unsecured loaded firearm. In incidents of gunfire on school grounds, up to eighty percent of underage shooters get their gun from home or relatives or friends' home because of easy access. After that shooting, and most recently, the school shooting at Oxford High School in Michigan, we see the tragic and deadly effects of easy access to firearms on our children and our people. School districts are unique in position to be able to reach parents, to educate them on the need for secure firearm storage that is now legally required in Oregon. As a teacher, I know what it's like to sit across from someone at a parent-teacher conference and wonder if they have a gun in their bag. As a community member, I know what it's like to sit next to an angry father at a basketball game and wonder if he has a gun in his pocket. As a parent, I know what it's like to get texts from my kids while they're in a school locker room because of a report that a student hasn't gotten their passport. Texts that say, "I love you, Mom," and just things like this. I urge the Hillsborough School Board to implement policy paging to notify parents of the new policy and to include information about the need for secure gun storage and requirements of bringing security staff. Deserve the right to go to school.
Do we have anybody else signed up? Uh, next item is the, next item is the consent agenda. Anybody like to move to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the. That the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed, is there any discussion?
Yep. Yes, by Chair Watson, I would like to pull the policies from the agenda, the consent agenda.
All of the policies or just some?
Um, all of them. And the reason being is that in the last board meeting, we had spoken about thirty-day review, and we are currently at twenty-one days. And it would be good to give the community the full thirty days that we said we would give them for the review.
Yeah, there, there's, you don't need to give any reasoning to take the policies out, or to, consent agenda is designed to be non-controversial stuff that you just get through. So, no reasoning necessary, just if we want to pull something from the consent agenda, we just do it. So, the, all the policies, so. Yeah, so. So, I would move to amend the agenda to include the policies in the action items at the end of our current agenda.
For clarity, that is.
So, take the policies out of the consent agenda, approve the rest of some, uh, if we take the policies out of the consent agenda and discuss those individually later, we can approve the rest of the consent agenda.
That would allow for discussion.
Discussion, right. Monique, can you make your point about the policy? Uh, yeah, so, I'm making another motion while that would, so, we'll come back to that in a second.
Yeah.
So, I move that we remove the, the policies from the consent agenda and amend our agenda to include them at the end of the current action items.
I second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to remove the consent, the policies from the consent agenda, put them at the end of the action items. Is there any further discussion? All right, Rose, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Sheen Kim?
I.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Yadira Martinez?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi. Okay, that motion carries. We'll discuss the policies later. Uh, Director Thomas, could you please amend your motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
How about I withdraw it and just do another motion? Motion withdrawn, I move to approve the consent, the amended consent agenda.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended consent agenda, is there any discussion? Rose, could you do a roll call, please?
Sheen Kim?
I.
Erica Lopez? Erica Lopez? I'll come back. Yadira Martinez?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi.
Director Lopez, we are looking for your vote.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, the motion to approve the amended consent agenda passes. All right, so to our next section is action items. The first one is regarding gifts and donations. Michelle, do you have anything that you'd like to cover for us there?
Uh, nothing to add, thank you.
I would entertain a motion as in the packet.
I move that the Board of Directors acknowledge the donation of five thousand dollars from the Oregon Robotics Tournament and outreach to Liberty High School for robotics team.
Second.
Who was it? Okay. It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Martinez that the Board of Directors acknowledge the donation of five thousand dollars from the Oregon Robotics Tournament and outreach to Liberty High School for the robotics team. Any further discussion? Rose, could you please do a roll call?
Sheen Kim?
I.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Yadira Martinez?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi. Motion carries. Next motion involves the adjustment of the lot lines for Eastwood Elementary, Casey and Adam's bike.
Oh, I'm here.
I'm here.
Wow.
Yes, this is kind of cleaning up the title for Eastwood Elementary School. The, the city has asked us to consolidate all of these properties onto a single tax lot. Eastwood currently is in three tax lots, so this will consolidate all of those into.
Feel similar to action we did last session?
Yes, yes, we've done this several times, yes.
Does anybody have any other informational questions for Adam? All right, there's the motion language in the packet.
I move that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Number Two Zero Two One Dash One Two Dash Seven to retitle the Eastwood Elementary School in the current school district entity's name and consolidate the three existing parcels into a single tax lot as required by the city of Hillsborough.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Kim that, uh, okay, here we go. The Board of Directors approved the Resolution Number Twenty Twenty One Twelve Dash Seven to retitle Eastwood Elementary School in the current school district's entity's name and consolidate the three existing parcels into a single tax lot as required by the city of Hillsborough. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll?
Sheen Kim?
I.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Yadira Martinez?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Hi.
Monique Ward?
Hi.
Mark Watson?
Hi. Motion carries. Great. This is a fun one. Michelle, well, so our next item is to accept the financial report, and Michelle may have some background information for us that she'd like to share.
I do, thank you.
Financial report is in the packet, starting on page. Fifty, fifty-five.
Yes, but a hard copy gorgeous like this is available upon request. So, just want to share that with you guys, that hard copies are available. Um, this is our annual comprehensive financial report. I just want to give a quick shout out to Jeff Jones here today, who is our district point of contact for all things audit-related and had the biggest hand in assembling this report. It was, as with everything, twenty twenty-one was a really unique year for us in the business office. And so, to have such a comprehensive review done and to have no findings or recommendations for improvements in our operations, especially operating in a mostly remote situation. Super, super impressed with my team and our audit firm that we use, Grove Miller Swank. Behind the situation page, there is an audit committee summary, and we, I don't think have provided that to the full board in the past. That's typically something we use just with the audit committee and what that document is, is, gives highlights of things to look at as you're reading this report. Most people don't read these reports on a regular basis, and so, we just wanted to make sure that you guys had that information to make it a little bit more comprehensive. I would like to entertain any questions or comments about the report at this time.
I just wanted to say that as a former auditor, I can appreciate the difficulty in putting forth a comprehensive audit under the pandemic. And at these times, I know it's time comprehensive, and it's a very difficult task. So, thank you for fighting through everything and getting it done, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions online, maybe? Monique? Uh, I thought the report was excellent, really enjoyed reading it all the way through. Uh, I have to, a few things stood out, and I'll try to just, I'll pick one for the, I think, we mentioned this upstairs, and week after week after week, we mentioned it. Everyone in education feels like this is the most trying time in their career. You can have been working as a, for thirty years or for one year, and you're somewhat overwhelmed, and, and hopefully, will be taking some action in conjunction with our license union later today to hopefully provide a little bit of relief where we can, while remaining legally compliant and whatnot. But I, you know, what? But I, you know, one of, one of the things that jumps out at me is, you know, student enrollment across the state, the pandemic influence, we're down about four percent. Um, and the, I think your team did an amazing job work making the budget work with less revenue from the state than we expected. Um, and I understand that to paraphrase Martin Granham that uh that four percent ending fund balance is like dancing on the head of a pin and and um while I'm very uh want to be very cautious about using one-time funding to make long-term promises, I would like to see the the board maybe consider some action to increase that ending fund balance a little bit. We we had reduced it in the in the decades of cuts. We had reduced that ending fund balance in in an effort to save staff. Keep our student teacher ratios is what we could afford. Um, and maybe it's a, it's an opportunity to use some of these one-time funds to help with that ending fund balance. Um, so nice job managing that and uh with the student percent, uh am I right? Was it about four percent? Right, that's four point four maybe. Um, I noticed that our our licensed staff is roughly down about the same. So I don't think our teacher ratio changed much. But I would say that serving on the classified bargaining committee has maybe very attuned to that group and the diverse um job categorizations that are lumped together in that one uh classified union. And I I do notice that it and every district has open positions everywhere. I mean, we're not the only ones who have trouble hiring. Everyone in the world is having trouble hiring. But we're down about ten percent classified people. I and I have to wonder what kind of contribution that is making to the difficult times that we're seeing that we have so fewer qualified adults in the in the building um to manage the same amount of students, so. Uh, that's one, one thing that jumped out to me from the financial statements. It's not really a financial thing, but it is, it all comes back to, it was illustrated in the financial report, so. Thank you, Michelle and your team for putting that together and uh again, another stellar audit. Uh, if there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors accept the comprehensive annual financial report for twenty 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 twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Martinez that the Board of Directors accept the comprehensive annual financial report for twenty twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you please call roll?
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Yudira Martinez.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is to approve the contract for some entry vestibules. Adam, do you have anything extra you want to share with us?
Nope, this is the last of the uh secure entry vestibules for us to award. Uh, and I'm recommending that we award it to Inline Construction, who has done the majority of the the vestibules that we've got to take.
I couldn't help but notice that all of the vendors who sought the award have probably worked with us before. Is that right? Does anybody have any questions for Adam regarding the contract for the entry vestibules? If not, then I want to entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors award the contract for construction of secure entry vestibules at Free Orchard Settlement Elementary, Imlay Elementary School, Lincoln School Elementary, uh Aranco Elementary School, Patterson Elementary School, Rosedale Elementary School, Witch Hazel Elementary School and the District Administration Center to inline construction in the amount of five hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors award the contract for construction of secure entry vestibules at Free Orchard Elementary School, Imlay Elementary School, Lincoln Street Elementary School, Aranco Elementary School, Patterson Elementary School, Rosedale Elementary School, Witch Hazel Elementary School and the District Administration Center to inline construction in the amount of five hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Is there any discussion? All right, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Yudira Martinez.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
All right, aye.
Motion carries. Uh, for those of you who weren't with us upstairs, there's a credible bond work summary uh at the end of the meeting upstairs, so if you get a chance, go back and watch that. Uh, the next motion is, next item is um a motion for an employee dismissal. Con, is there anything to add?
I just, we're here for your board's recommendation on what we previously discussed about the staff dismissal regarding insubordination and neglect of duty.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the superintendent's recommendations to dismiss Christine Oglesby on the grounds of insubordination and neglect of duty effective December seventh, twenty twenty-one.
I second.
It's been moved by Director Martinez and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors adopt the superintendent's recommendation to dismiss Christine Oglesby on the grounds of insubordination and neglect of duty effective September seventh, December seventh, twenty twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Yudira Martinez.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just as we put the audit and budget to bed for one cycle, we have another uh thing to address. Michelle, do you have anything to add for the next item?
Uh, actually, I would like to just mention that um as part of every work session, starting in January, we're going to have a a small budget component and we do extend an invitation to our budget committee. And we have um kind of added some subject area to each one of those work sessions, taking that an opportunity to really highlight the different major funding sources that we have and uh the restrictions that are around each of those, just to give the community a better idea of how we uh leverage funds to serve students. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
And the item in front of us is to adopt the budget planning calendar for the upcoming year, right? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the planning calendar for the
Yeah, you're right.
Yes, it is. Sorry. Planning calendar for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors adopt the planning calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-three budget. Is there any discussion? Rose, can you call the roll?
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Yudira Martinez.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And as of last meeting, your uh budget committee is fully staffed, correct? All right. The next item is to discuss a calendar revision for the upcoming year and Mike, Connor, it sounds like you guys want to have a
Yep.
All the information to start?
Yeah, thanks. I'll kick us off. So we're bringing this item to you because um this, this year, I think, well, Mark alluded to it, that um you talk to any staff member, this has been the most difficult year of their career, regardless of how many years they've been at it. And that's for a variety of different reasons. Um, we know that um coming back to every student every day, in-person instruction, that the students' needs have been different than they were before. Um, the academic needs that the kids are experiencing, the social, emotional needs and the behavioral needs are all real issues that not, not just items that get reported in the news, but these are real life in schools um in our neighborhoods and across the state and across the country. We have students that are off track with their graduation credits in a, in a concerning way. And again, that is a trend that continues across our region. Um, we've got students that have a number of incompletes to make up and we've got interventions and assistance that um the students are needing that that we need to provide for them. In addition to that, when you see an increase in student needs the way that we have um this year, we also see an increase in staff needs because of the wear and tear that it takes on staff members. So um when you, if you were to talk to a staff member, their concerns mostly um there's, comes in a variety of different words, but uh it comes down to how are we going to meet the needs of the students? And what are we going to do to make sure that the kids are on track? And how are we going to find the time to do that? I say I give you all that background information because this item is um something that we thought long and hard about because we don't take this lightly. But our recommendation this evening is going to be, we've identified three, we've identified three days that we would like to transition from student contact days to non-student contract days. And the purpose of those days would give staff members an opportunity to do some planning to meet the needs of the students that they currently have in their classes. Um, the urgency for this and the reason that we're asking this to be considered this evening is because one of those days is in January. And the reason that January has been targeted, targeted for the first day is that um that date comes a couple of weeks before the end of the semester. And it gives the teachers and the students some time to do some planning to avoid additional uh incompletes. So um we need, that's the action that we're requesting right now. You also need to know that behind the scenes, we're having a lot of conversations with our staff members and with our union leadership. Um, we continue to be engaged in those conversations with the purpose of finding a way to uh repurpose some of the time that's available to us. And um so that, so that that time can be used to meet the student needs. Um, I don't think I can emphasize enough the concern we have around how the needs of our students right now and um and the amount of re-engagement that we need to do and the amount acceleration that we need to do. Um, we know that when grad rates come out, we're going to be down from where we're used to being and that's, that's a concern to us. But more than anything, we're concerned about um not only academics, but the social, emotional well-being of our students as well. And finding some time so we can do some of this preventative work. So that's a way of just introducing the concept that Olga's going to, that Connor's going to talk about as we um as we consider this calendar item.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so tonight we are proposing those three dates um because we want uh to also give advance notice to our families so they can plan and prepare and knowing what those dates will be. And um those dates are January fourteenth, March fourth, and May sixth. And another layer that we look at is um absenteeism uh and filling staff uh positions if staff are absent. And so Fridays and Mondays are, tend to be our higher uh number of days that we have for absences. And so this also allows us to think through that piece as well. And so um just having the opportunity for students and staff to have support to meet the needs of students uh is really critical. So what we'd like to propose tonight is um that you would uh approve the revised twenty twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. Um, and so that we can um if you move forward with that, we will put that update on our webpage uh within this week. Are there any questions?
Uh, will there be uh communication to the district parents about the additional days and the changes to the calendar?
Yes, we have that. When we um make a change to the uh established calendar and we make an update, there is communication that goes out. Through our hot news and and various other.
My last question is um presuming that we did, just confirming that we have let the EA um our, both of our unions are aware of these three additional days that we are proposing?
Yes, we have. We have had some discussions about that.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Connor or Mike? All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt a revised twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two calendar.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Martinez. He knows that the Board of Directors approved the revised twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two calendars. Is there any further discussion?
I, I just want to commend our, our partnership with um our administration, our unions to um really take into consideration this year and the just the heaviness and um amount of workload um for staff, but also our students that I think as Mike, you put it um thinking beyond just the academic consequences, but thinking about the social and emotional um learning of our students and how this has been a very challenging year. Um, I just appreciate our flexibility and um looking at those needs and making the changes that we need to make.
To follow up behind Erica's comments, I would like to make sure that, as we say to all of our staff, teaching staff, that we recognize and appreciate greatly, deeply the sacrifice and the effort that it's taken to deal with our children who have to some degree lost their ability to socialize, lost their ability to interact and quite frankly, are struggling um to learn how to re-engage in the academic atmosphere. And it takes a lot of effort and energy and there, it's a really difficult situation to be where we know kids need more contact time and yet the teachers need less contact. That is a very, very, very difficult line to address. And I just appreciate the fact that we have a relationship with our teachers and all of our staff that we can get this done for them on our, on their behalf. So thank you.
I would just also echo that, yeah, I'm very appreciative of the collaborative nature of the work that our administrative team and our unions have done to create this opportunity. When we discussed putting this on the, on the agenda for today, um the sense of urgency was there because I, I personally appreciate the idea that teachers will get a chance right before the end of that semester to dig in, figure out which students might need a little extra help getting across that finish line, so.
And to breathe.
And to breathe. Uh. And I would suggest that um this is likely the, not the only action that we will see over the course of the rest of the year to try to deal with the challenging educational environment that we're in. Uh, the, the board is pretty persistently nagging is too strong a word, communicating with the administrative team to try to be creative in ways to provide relief and assistance to our staff that remain legally compliant with what we have to do.
I'd just like to offer really quickly, I think that this is going to be very greatly appreciated from the student side. I know I don't just talk for myself or just the students of Glencoe High School when I say that students all across our district are, we're all struggling. We are tired, we are exhausted. Um, and we are all having to basically relearn how to be students and how to be people at this time. And I think that it's going to be I think it is going to be very welcome to have that bit of time for us before the end of the semester to have time to focus on homework that needs to be caught up on, focus on the things that keep piling up around us. Um, and also take some of that time to rest because it is an entirely different experience to be back at school after a year off and I'm very glad to see action being taken on this.
Any further questions or comments? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Yudira Martinez.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, now we do parliamentary juggling. All right. Director Ward has asked to remove the policies from the consent agenda. We will now address them here. Um, Director Ward, would you like to summarize um why we, we want to address them separately as opposed to collectively in the consent agenda?
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, that the last board meeting, we had said thirty days uh for the policy review for the community and I would like to see us follow through with that. Um, and give the public the thirty days that was requested. That was stated, I'm sorry.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add to the discussion?
Well, I have a question. If because we're considering it today, did we really cut off the thirty days?
Uh, the policy does not indicate a requirement of thirty days. We, we have colloquially said thirty days. It has generally meant the duration between regular sessions and the policy. It has generally meant the duration between regular sessions and the policy reads. Uh, in most cases, a first reading of the policy will be scheduled on a regular meeting agenda prior to its adoption at a subsequent, a regular or special meeting. So that we've colloquially said thirty days in the past. And maybe we shouldn't use that language anymore, but uh. It's almost always traditionally been from regular session to regular session, and I realize this regular session is. Earlier than most in the calendar month that we often have.
Understood.
For reference.
And I think it's on page three of our agenda packet on I, you can also see that language. Um, that states that it's on a first reading. And it'll say at the bottom, um, that it'll be placed on consent agenda for approval during the next regular meeting. So it doesn't have. Like a time period, but I don't, I think that maybe, like you were saying, Mark, we've. Said it verbally, you know, we'll put it on a thirty day read. But really it's just until our next regular meeting and that's what we should probably say.
And that's what's been printed. Yeah, I think that's what we should probably say from now on.
Agree.
And if anybody would like any references. Some of the past examples just from, we'll stick with this year. Uh, one time it was forty-eight days, thirty-five days, twenty-one days, twenty-one days, forty-nine days. Twenty-eight days, twenty-one days, forty-two days, twenty-eight days, twenty-eight days. So that, so it's fairly common for us to approve policies earlier than the thirty days, so.
I did go, but just for reference, I did, because I, Monique did. Kind of give me a heads up that this was going to be an issue, so I appreciate that. Did have the chance to go back and take a look at the last three years of meetings. And this year or last year, it was six times. We didn't have thirty days between the year before that. It was seven times the year before that. It was six times. So this is a pretty regular occurrence. I think where the issue comes is the way we refer to it. And so I think we just need to switch from the thirty day reference to the first reading and second reading or next regular session, whatever we want, whatever we want to say.
So I acknowledge the fact that we're not giving it a full thirty days. But it is not uncommon for us to do this because we go meeting to meeting.
Yeah, that, that's what we've done in the past. So I guess, uh, I don't, Rose and I, Monique, thank you very much for the heads up on this, so. But I think Rose and I have done a bunch of research parliamentarily as to how we're supposed to address this, so. Uh, I think we're handling it the right way. I'm not exactly, so the. The, do we? They were on the agenda to be approved. We've moved them in the agenda to be discussed now. Do you want, do you want to make a motion that we don't do it and see how that goes? Or do you just want to try to address them one by one, address them as? So I'm, I'm happy to just move them forward. Nothing seemed too controversial to me, but you know, I'm, I'm fine with. Uh, entertaining a motion to not discuss them and wait the thirty days. I'm fine with, so I, I don't know. Officially what we're sup. So yeah, if you, if, so we've, we've taken out the agenda, removed them from the consent agenda to be discussed separately. We can discuss them separately or you can make a motion to not do that or whatever, whatever you want to do.
So I'm not sure that I'm clear on what, what you're saying. You're, you're saying that we need to have a, to, to have a motion to do what?
To not address them today. They, they were on the agenda to be addressed today. Commonly, we have addressed them in less than thirty days. So they've been moved out of the consent agenda, so they're not just passed automatically. They are in the action, they are now in the agenda at the end of the action items, which is where we are now. So the next action item would be to address policy. AB Board of Governance, Support Governance and Operations, AC Discrimination. Or address them as a group or, so the next action item would, but I, I understand you probably didn't want to just move to the next action item. You wanted to. Discuss tabling these. So if you want to officially move to table them, we could vote on whether or not we want to address them now or table them. Or we could just go on with the, with the discussion of the policies at hand. However, you want to, whatever you're comfortable doing.
So in short, we have to make a decision now that we've taken them off.
Not really. No, we, we put them on the agenda. We can continue with the, we could just address the next one. But I, I want to give Director Ward the opportunity to not do that if, if. Or entertain the idea that everybody, you know, take the temperature of the room. So based on the parliamentary procedure we took before, we take them out of the consent agenda, put them at the end of our action items. And now would be the time to start addressing them either individually or as a group.
Couldn't.
Sure, good.
Sorry, um, couldn't we just move to take action on them during our next meeting so that it exceeds the time of the thirty day review, which is. Sorry, it's bedtime, uh, which would give, um. Which would give the public thirty days, thirty days plus. Uh, and just move to consider these during our next regular meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that's what Director Ward is suggesting. I'm fine addressing them now. I don't know where all the board members stand on it. It sounded like. Uh, Director Lopez was sort of thinking along my lines of just go ahead and, since they were. Had a first reading, just go ahead and do their second reading. Um, so I, yes, uh, whatever the best way to take the temperature of everyone on the board is whether or not. We want to address them tonight or not, I think is fair.
I think the baby had a boat.
Okay, so, um, I move that we table them and give the community the thirty days.
Table to the next meeting?
To the next meeting. Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
So it's been moved that we table the policies listed for. Second reading on tonight's agenda to next meeting's, next regular session's agenda. Is that about right?
Yes.
Uh, by Director Ward and seconded by Director Lopez. Is there any discussion? There we go. Now, everybody want, I'm fine, go ahead and doing it now, so I'd be, I'm probably going to vote no. But I think everybody, does anybody want to discuss or do you just want to vote?
The only discussion that I want to have is to make sure that the next time we do this. That we don't, that we say what we mean. If we're going to go thirty days, we should probably do it and then count it out and/or just say that we'll. Delay it to the next meeting or whatever it is. But she's right. If it wasn't thirty days, it wasn't thirty days. And we said that.
We've said that for three years and done it in less than thirty days.
So we probably ought to mean what we say and say what we mean. That's what I want to make sure.
So anybody else have any input on this? We just want to vote on the motion at hand. All right, Rose can call the role, uh, role, please.
She and Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Yadira Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
No. Motion carries. We will add those to the regular agenda for the next meeting, which is January. Okay, second meeting in January.
So just for clarity, is that going on the consent agenda?
Oh.
I mean, that's where, well, that's where they would normally, that's our typical process.
Yeah, you can pull some or all or whatever, right? Yeah, that, alright, okay. Alright.
January twenty-sixth.
Right, so we'll go on that. Next item on the agenda is reports and discussion. Michelle, financial report.
Thank you, Chair Watson. I have, in your packet is the financial report as of November thirtieth. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, specifically about the cash flow or narrative of what's been going on district-wide.
Any questions for Michelle?
Just another announcement of a fine job. Thank you.
I do, I do have one question. Um, so on the report under the payroll team and employee benefits, it was noted that. There's still continued staff support through the vaccination verification process. Is that still going on?
Yes, because for our staff who have approved exceptions in the district, medical or otherwise. There are requirements to like this, a higher level of safety protocols for them, and so we continue to monitor them. And make sure that they're meeting the testing requirements that their supervisors are also. Making sure that they're safe in their work environment. So that's, it's been an ongoing experience and probably will be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? Alright, thank you. The next is the bond audit report, also with Michelle.
Yes, thank you again. Another exciting financial, uh, report. We had, in addition to our regular audit testing that happens for all of our funds and transactions in the district. We have a very specialized bond audit review that, this is the third annual review in a row. Again, special thanks to Jeff Jones as our district point of contact and especially to Adam Stewart and his team. On pages two hundred and thirty-eight and two thirty-nine of the packet. The independent auditors, Moss Adams, say that we, that our reports are fairly stated and no recommendations for improvements in our processes around. Spending these bond funds that are fully aligned with our ballot title and we're super proud of that. Terrific job, Adam and team. You guys know exactly how to spend ninety-eight million dollars in one year.
Any questions on the bond that we didn't cover upstairs?
I just also want to acknowledge, um, this is something that early on when we started doing a lot of these, these bond projects. Um, was brought up as an additional audit to look at how we're spending and make sure that we're transparent and accountable. To our community for the bond that, um, they passed and I am just really continue to be. Appreciative and really happy to see this work and have this documentation that we can show our community that we're being good stewards of public funds.
Any other questions? Thank you. Feels like bond day, but yeah, it's a great summary upstairs, great audit report. Nicely done, Adam. And is Matt still here? I don't think so, but a big shout out to the Bond Citizens Oversight Committee. And Matt Buckingham, their chair, um, for their continued oversight of us spending the taxpayers' money and. Uh, another slide, a slide that really enhance, if you go back and look at the presentations from upstairs. That we asked the community for four hundred eight million dollars and came in under the tax rate. And we have ended up having about five hundred ten million dollars to spend because of the adept. Skill set of Adam and Michelle as our, um, capital projects officer and our chief financial officer to. Get our, our bonds were so desired, uh, when we went to capital markets that people were willing to pay a premium on those bonds, so. Just an amazing job all the way around for our district. Thank you. Alright, next is policies on first reading. No day limit of review. They will, there are, they will be at their second reading next regular session. Uh, if you have any questions, oh, no, there's one more first. Oh, I skipped an AR, right? I skipped an AR, sorry. Never mind.
Now this one we are just. This is one Dale.
Exchange students.
Yes. Dale's going to share this.
I was just going to go, a quick overview, um, share some information regarding the administrative role for J E C B A. This is not an AR that requires board approval, but it is one that I wanted to make sure that you were. Aware of the changes that we will be making to the AR. Over the past couple of years. There's been some confusion both with our schools in their process as well as our business partners that help support the placement of our. Exchange students and so in collaboration with all of the stakeholders. This fall, we began crafting a new AR in order to make sure that it was a clear process. Um, that had some very concrete dates and deadlines and basically allowed. The district, uh, support team to support schools in those placements. Previously, um, companies went directly to the schools, both the principals as well as counselors in order to work through. The, the process of placing our exchange students, which was at times inequitable and sometimes as well confusing. And so, um, we will be supporting that process here where we will be able to, um, provide a lottery. And then also, um, clear predictable communication on a timeline so that we can better, um, welcome and accept exchange students into our systems. We're really excited to put that into place. Our next steps, um, will be to communicate directly with those companies to allow them to. Learn about the new process as well as, um, training our administrators and our counselors on this process. I think everybody is really excited about the clarity.
Any questions for Dale and for reference, anybody following at home? The policy is in the packet beginning on page two hundred and fifty-eight. Alright Dale, thank you very much. Alright, next up is the policies that will go on first reading for next regular session. If you have any questions, the names of the cabinet, uh, for each are listed on the packet. So feel free to direct your questions towards them. Next item is reports. Do we have Melody online? I see Jill here, right? Yeah, would you like to go first?
Okay, my challenge is always, um, wearing my glasses with the mask and then being able to see you and what I'm reading, so. I can't see you all, but I can see what I'm reading, so there you go. Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow board members and Superintendent Scott. Thank you to those of you that were able to meet with me since the last school board meeting. I have found this to be so valuable and a way to get to know each other, share our perspectives, build on our commonalities. And our shared vision for HSD students and staff. I look forward to meeting with everyone this winter and hopefully before the end of January. Our bargaining continues to go swimmingly. During our last session, we talked about transfers, vacancies, temporary employees, reduction in force. Members covering for subs, inclement weather and more. Next Tuesday, we will be giving a counterproposal to the district on salary and insurance. And the workday work year, which includes prep time. This is an opportunity for members and all to watch via our live stream that can be found on our HEA OEA website. As you know, the sub shortage is still a concern for educators. It is impossible for teachers to provide each student with the support they need to thrive, given the shortage of teachers and support staff. Schools, however, are navigating, um, this and during one of the most significant challenges ever faced by America's public education system. Our classrooms are filled with students who have had radically different experiences during the COVID nineteen pandemic, pandemic. Excuse me. This has created a spectrum of individualized needs for our students that is so broad. When the social and emotional needs of our students aren't being met, they are likely to either disconnect from their learning. Or act out in a way that disrupts the learning of their peers and their own learning. Now educators appreciate the increased support that you have provided tonight. And that the district has provided over the past several weeks. And believe that the listening sessions will help to provide teachers the time and resources we need to meet the needs of all of our learners. We really appreciate that Superintendent Scott and his admin team have chose to approach the listening sessions in this way as it will help our staff to feel more heard. And hopefully will surface deeper understandings and lead to solutions, which is always our shared goal. And as you know, the listening sessions, most all of them are in person. The sessions are targeted at various levels, high school, middle and elementary, which allows for a smaller group setting, providing everyone an opportunity to share and have their voice in the room. We as teachers, we chose careers in education because we believe in students and in the promise of public education. We believe that a school must be more than just a place. It can and should be a community where students are safe, nurtured and supported. We all owe it to our students to find sustainable solutions and tonight's action taken by you allowing educators the time they need will just, will help to do just that. Thank you for supporting us.
I see Melody available online. It's you?
Yes, I'm here. So, good evening. Since July first, twenty twenty-one, we have had about a hundred and thirty-eight classified employees resign from Hillsborough School District. We have also had many retired. We have also had many retire in the same period and I'm not sure why they have resigned or retired. As it was said earlier tonight, classified is down about ten percent. I do know that some have left over the COVID vaccine, however, I also know that many have left for other reasons. Many classified employees have left due to feeling overwhelmed with the amount of work they are asked to perform along with a number of students they need to, to help support. Many classified staff continued to feel overwhelmed, as it was said earlier tonight. For example, the media assistants in the elementary schools and in some cases secondary schools, working with up to eighteen or more classes in a week and then being asked to cover other classes or hold other classes such as tech. Custodians that do not have enough time due to staffing shortages to even clean the schools that they are working at and SEAs and EAs that are getting six hours a day, they're staying a couple of extra hours and helping them so that they can get their jobs done and have a clean school for staff and students the next day. And we also have shortages in the kitchen staffing. Some kitchens have small staffing compared to what they are used to working with. Kitchens closing and other schools picking up the remaining work. These are just a few examples that I'm hearing of shortages in the staffing in the district. But please allow me the time as I would like to read a statement from one of our classified employees. While this is from one member, this is a representation on how classified staff are feeling in their jobs. So this is the letter. "I started with the school district as an EA in nineteen ninety-five and have remained a loyal and dedicated employee despite the changes, reduction in hours and positions over the past twenty-six years. Even during the times when classified hours were cut and jobs were reclassified and we were called on to do numerous tasks, so many of us remained committed, dedicated and gave HSD our best years and our best work. So much so that I was even nominated for the Crystal Apple Award and so many other long timers have been as well. While we appreciate the recognition of our coworkers, we feel that everyone should not be rec, just reckon, sorry, everyone should just, not just be recognized but compensated for their longevity, hard work and loyalty for decades. I have had many opportunities to do other things, but I'm committed to the HSD community, students and family, families. I feel like many of our underserved and underrepresented families are accustomed to people bailing on them and not investing in their future. And I did not want to just be one more person that did that to them. So I have stayed steady, strong and supportive of our families through many other personal challenges in my life and many have. Still, at ten years, instead of being rewarded for our years of faithful service and commitment, we are tapped out as far as salaries go. After over twenty-five years of working in HSD and now doing the job of a specialist for a classified pay, my salary is so low that I actually qualify for low income housing and many of us do, even if we don't take advantage of it. And most of us don't because we want to leave such benefits for the families we serve in our school communities. The point, the very fact that we long-term employees would even fall in that category just does not seem fair. You are getting everything from us, but it is not right that you exploit our love for what we do and the school community we serve by undercompensating us. Please be reasonable. That's all we ask, reasonable and fair. So again, this is just a letter from one classified member that wishes to remain anonymous and we will respect that request of them. And we all love what we are doing with the students of HSD and we will continue to do what we need to do for them. They're just asking for respect and equitable treatment. And in closing, we hope that everyone has a great holiday break in two weeks from now. Good night. Thank you."
Thank you, Melody. Uh, next is student representatives time. You guys decide who's going first?
Okay, I realize I was grabbing the microphone to consult with my others, but I believe that Michelle also was having to type up her statements. She could interrupt me if she so chooses, but uh, I'm very glad to have the opportunity to speak here today, more so today than I can think of in other times of the past because like I alluded to earlier, students across the district are really struggling right now. I go to school every day with peers of mine who make jokes about walking away, who make jokes about calling their parents to come and pick them up, who make jokes about dropping out. I go to students, I go to school every day with students who are acting out because they don't feel respected. They don't feel listened to. They don't feel like they matter and are tired of putting up with the stress that living through this pandemic year has caused. I think that there's a lot of good that happens in this district office and in this boardroom. I think that every person I've worked with in the Hillsborough School District or who I've had the pleasure of interacting with has been putting their genuine best effort into making things good for students. But I think that there's a disconnect between what happens in this building and what students and even many of my teachers have been telling me they perceive is happening within our schools that I think really deserves to have attention called to it. I asked my AP psychology classroom the other day, when we were discussing some of the recent events at Glencoe, if any of them felt like they had ever been well communicated to by the school district. Not a single person, my teacher included, raised their hand. That's the way it feels in the schools and I think that that's our big, one of our big struggles right now because while it may not be the most forward-facing issue, it ends up feeding into many of the other issues. Students feel scared because they don't feel like administration does a good job of communicating to them or that the district does a good job of communicating to them. Students don't want to go to school because of that lack of communication. They don't feel respected or like their opinions have value and weight. And I think that that's not how it actually is, but I think that we as a district, as an entire district, need to make a much stronger commitment towards showing them, not just with our words, not just with what happens inside this boardroom, as important as it may be, but also in our actions. And I'm just going to keep harping on this point throughout the school year because I think it's really important. And if I can make any one change with my time in the Hillsborough School District, this is what I would like it to be because I think if this thing can be improved, then that is going to change outcomes for so many other people for years down the line. So I'm grateful that you've given us this platform, but I'm going to continue to use it.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that I definitely agree. I know that a lot of students, just like staff, are struggling very hard during these times. I, I have seen straight A students drop their grades up to, down to eyes. I have seen students have mental breakdowns because it's just so much. Especially as a senior, it's very hard to keep up with all the work. And having done our junior year online, it was very hard to get into IB and getting the feel for all the work coming back after never doing it before. It feels like even though people told us that this is gonna be our easiest year, it turns out to be our hardest year. Not only are we trying to juggle, trying to do all our college applications and getting ready for college and doing our essays and just getting everything done in such a short amount of time with that comparing the year prior. But we're also trying to get all our IB tests in place and we have to start learning so many things and our transcript and it's just so much for seniors to deal with. And just like them, I know their teachers are having such a hard time trying to get the students to do their work and to stay on track. I know my teachers have set so many timelines for us and tried to be as organized as they could for us. So that's easier on us, but although they're doing as much as they can, the students are still not doing their work and I think that that's not because they're trying to rebel against school or something, but it's just a very hard time for everybody. And I think that it's very important to take in consideration everybody's mental health and I think that that's something that we're doing very good at. And I think that we always have that in the back of our minds while making decisions. And thank you to all the parents and everybody who came out to listen to what we have to say.
Hey, hi guys. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yes, Michelle. Thank you.
Okay, hi, sorry. I'm sorry that I couldn't be at the meeting today. First, I would like to bring attention, like Seth and Kaylee, to some of the concerns of students, especially relating to safety. I think since the school year started, some students have felt very unsafe and the events and threats recently have not eased the tension at all for a lot of them. And I acknowledge that the board is working hard to ensure that students feel safe, but I want to still give a voice to the students that still live with that anxiety and fear. I also think that socially right now, I think that a lot of students are struggling. I know that even if some of them can talk to people and approach to people, I think that a lot of them still feel out of place and unsupported in their school. I know personally I can speak on that. And I think that mental health before the pandemic was already, like it could have been better. I think that right now a lot of kids are struggling even more. And then however, like on a more positive note, I think that the preschool presentation earlier in the meeting was very important. And I'm glad that work is being done to ensure that universal preschool education for all in Washington County is being, like work is being done for that. I'm also very grateful for some extra time that's being given to staff, even though it's just a few days. I think that any extra time is greatly appreciated. I know that students and teachers are all extremely burned out and I, it hurts to see me, see like a lot of my teachers and fellow classmates be just so worn out. I think that, yeah, so actually any extra time is greatly appreciated. I hope to see you guys after the break in the new year. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Next up is Superintendent Sun.
All right, thank you. First of all, just to reiterate, I've appreciated the conversations that we've been having with our staff members and just hearing about the concerns and being able to engage in problem solving around that. I look forward to continue those conversations and just partnering to find solutions. And we'll keep you up to speed on that for sure. We also have some student listening schedule, student listening sessions that we're going to be scheduling. And that is going to happen from mid-January to late-January, so I'll let you know when those are. We typically invite board members to participate in those. And again, that will be a representative group of the students. They just make sure they represent the student body with a number of different voices from each of the schools. So I will get that scheduled out to you. Continue to do school visits and I am continually amazed at the work I see our staff members doing and the experience that they're providing for our students. Yes, it has been a challenge for sure and the students' needs are different now than they used to be. But the, the extra mile that our staff members are going to deliver what's necessary for students is just incredibly impressive and we're so appreciative of that. Appreciate the adjustments to the calendar. I know that it will go a long ways and that will help us keep our conversations going regarding how we use time in our buildings and how, how we can meet student needs. Also just, I didn't mention this before, but for our non-licensed staff members, when there's a calendar adjustment and there will, there will not be any cuts to their time as well. We, we will, we need all hands on deck and we'll put, I keep everybody working during these days. So I just want to throw that out there as well. Finally, I'd just like to thank our board members, the amount of time that you put in and the conversations that you have on a regular basis are so important for our students and for our community and our staff and our team that puts so much of this work together so that we can engage in those conversations. I hope that you all have excellent time off and that you get to rest or rejuvenate in whatever way it is that you do that. We appreciate you and your commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Now board time. Let's start online. The only one I see is Director Lopez. Would you like to go first?
Sure. I guess we'll continue the order as we're in. Yeah. Um, I, I just definitely want to thank everybody for their, their works in our meeting today. All the presentations were great and I also just want to mention to our student representatives that this platform is intentional for you to speak out and to let our community know the voices and elevate the voices of our students. And I'm so appreciative of all of you because precisely what you spoke about today being just a difficult year all, all around, that you're still here and participating on board meetings as well because this is a way that you can also advocate for student needs. And, and so I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledge you for taking this, this challenge on this year on top of your regular school activities. As we all know, it's, it's been a challenging year. And thank you for our administration and our, our union to continue to partner and work together to try to, as best as we can, address as many things as we can, as well as knowing the needs that we have to provide a public education to our students and also grapple with a tough year that we have today. So I just want to make sure that I acknowledge that and, and I will see you all in the new year and wish you all a nice break.
Thank you. Director Martinez?
I don't have much, just, you know, I want to thank everyone for the presentations and their participation for today. There's a lot going on and we're going to continue to, to do that work. But hopefully everyone gets some much-needed time off here pretty soon. So yeah, I just wanna tell them, let everyone know to have a, have a good break.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, and to get boosters.
Two weeks. Director Kim?
I also don't have much. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday break and we will continue to creatively problem solve in the new year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Director Ward?
I want to thank everyone again, especially our audience for being here, our community to be out today. Thank you to the staff for always being willing to answer my plethora of questions. I did have a question about CCAC and I see that we have a lot of, I look at the calendar for the year. We have a lot of updates for different groups and such, but I don't ever see one for CCAC. Do we get any presentation or updates for that? Okay.
And we get updates when there's actual curric, new curriculum to approve?
Okay. And I want to wish everyone a happy holiday as well. Have a Merry Christmas and a New Year. Thank you.
Thanks. Director Thomas?
Like everyone else, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to visit with us this evening. And I want to say a special thank you to our friends from the union. Whether it's classified or unclassified or licensed or unlicensed, there is something very special about the ability to come together and represent a group of people who need your help. I say that because my sister is a high school teacher in the state of Georgia and I consult with her often and they have no union. I pray that one day they have something close to what you all do here. And it's very difficult to hear her stories and then to know how we have it here in this district, especially the relationship that we have. So it's very important. I want to acknowledge that today to the parents, if there's anyone left out there. I'm urging parents to talk to their children. Those conversations, I don't think are happening and it sounds strange, but I'm gonna say it. I'm urging parents to talk to their children, talk about what's happening in the schools, talk about schoolwork, talk about their teachers, talk about the behavior. It's so, so important. And I think if we can reengage parents and kids and reengage back to the school, I think that we might have some better outcomes, better behaviors in the school. And I just want to say thank you to everybody on the board and Rose. God bless you for putting up with me. I just want to say that perfectly. So thank you. Happy holidays to all.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Yes, thanks, everybody for being here and joining us virtually. And I get first shout out to our tech department for pretty much seamless integration of virtual and in-person. So, I mean, it went so well upstairs, went so well down here. Thank you very much. That, that doesn't just happen. They put in a lot of work to make that happen. So, well done, team. Yeah, I am honored to serve on the classified bargaining committee and thanks, thanks to that group for having me every few weeks or so and feels like getting closer, so that's great. Thanks to have a new board member who's helping us be more precise with our language. I had the opportunity to attend all four of the fall performances at the high school plays. So you, uh, there'll be spring ones. If you haven't had a chance to see a play in one of our high schools, it's really just in, super impressive. So, um, get out there and, uh, when the spring ones come around. So I got a chance to see all four or all three. So it was great. Century did not do one. They're doing it next spring. So, um, anything else? Oh, uh, I told a few, we kind of do anything we want. Uh, I told a few people this individually, but, uh, in case you haven't heard already, if, if it's, so my whole life is pretty much if, including the fact that I believe I locked my wife out of our RV, at some point during this board meeting. Well, she realized that that's something. So, uh, we live in RV, we live in a van down by the river as we wait for our house to be, uh, reconstructed. So like most of my life is if, so, but I will tell you that if, 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 if. If, uh, Representative Solomon who joined us earlier this evening, uh, if the Democratic Party of Washington County puts her name forward and if the Washington County Commissioners choose her to become Senator Solomon to replace retiring Senator Riley, I will be putting my name forward to fill her seat temporarily as the representative for House District Thirty. That's where my current burned-out house lit is, which is still my address. Um, and I will tell you that I cannot run for that office. I am being redistricted out of that office. By the time all of this happens, we will be a week or two from session. I feel like my time serving, uh, on, in the state legislature, uh, has prepared me to be able to jump into that, work on it right away, and I would like to see the candidates for that, um, focus their attention on campaigning. So I cannot run for the seat, but I would, uh, be interested in serving out the remainder of the seat. So for what it's worth, letting everybody know, does not mean I will no longer continue to be the Hill, but Hillsborough School Board Chair. I plan to do both. Many representatives throughout the state do both jobs simultaneously. For me, it'd be like a very short period of time. So I don't feel like it'd be too cumbersome. So if you hear like a rumor about, oh, Watson's going for the thing, doesn't mean I'm done here. It just means I'm going to try to do them both for a little while. If, 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 right, yeah. And then they, yeah, probably it won't pick me either, but yeah, so, uh, so, uh, with that, we are adjourned until January eleventh. Thank you, everybody.